आज शुभ मंगल प्रारंभ में लिए हम जोत प्रज्वलन से प्रारंभ करेंगे दोनों हाथ जोड़कर के हम कहें कि हे ईश्वर हमारे अंतह करण में आप जोत जगाइए जैसे हम यहां जोद प्रज्वलित कर रहे हैं चलिए हरि ही ओम श्री गुरु भयो नमः हरि ही ओम ओम भूरभव स्वह ओम तत्सवितुल वरेण्यम भरगो देवस्य धीमहि दियोयोन प्रचोदया ओम उद्गुण्य स्वाग्न प्रतिजाग्रहित विष्ठा पूर्ते सगम् स्रजेधाम यंच अस्मिन सदस्ते अध्युत्तर अस्मिन विश्वे देवाय जवानस्य सीदत ओम भोधीपम दर्शयामि ओम अग्नि मिड़े पुरोहितम यज्जस्य देव प्रत्विजम होतारम मृत्तधातम ओम भिरण्यगर्भ समवर्तता प्रेम भूतस्य जात पतिरेग आसीद सदाधार वृद्ध विन्यमो तेम कस्मई देवाय विशाविधेम ओम प्रजापते नत्वधेत्या नन्यो विश्वा जातानि परिताब भू यत्ता मास्ते जुमस्तन्नो स्यांपतयो रईना ओम सनोबंधुरजनिता सविधाता धामानि वेद भुवनानि विश्व यत्र देवा अमृतमान शानास्त्र तिये धामन्न धैरयंत ओम अग्ने नयसु पधाराय अस्मान विश्वानि देव वयुनान विद्वान युद्यस्मज जुराण मेनो भोष्ठान्दे नम उत्तम विधेम प्रत्यक्ष देवाय भास्कराय भाई और बहनों आज शुभ प्रसंग पे हम मार्गदर्शन देखते हैं आचार्य जी जब हमें आज्ञा देकर चले जाते हैं तो उस आज्ञा का पालन करने के लिए सबसे आगे जो खड़े होकर रहते हैं हमारे पास जो हमें मार्गदर्शित करते हैं वे हमारी माता श्री सुनिता जी खुदा तो हम तो आभारी हैं आपके कि आप संत गण आचार्य जी आप पधारे लेकिन जब आप नहीं होते तो जब भी हमें मार्गदर्शन चाहिए होता है तो हम सभी उन्हीं के पास जाते हैं और आज तक वर्षों से हमें इतना अच्छा मार्गदर्शन दिया है उन्होंने और हमें यहां तक पहुंचाया है लिए I am proud to introduce you all to Mrs. Sunita Khudar Please give her a warm welcome हमारे सीजीआई बर्मिंगम से आए हैं डेप्युटी काउंसिल जनरल मिस समानत मान जी Let's give her a warm welcome please, thank you पधारिए
Namaste and greetings to everyone सबसे पहले मैं शुक्रियादा करना चाहूंगी यहां के ऑर्गेनाइजर्स का एंड नॉटिंग हम सिटी काउंसिल फॉर गिविंग सपोर्ट तू दिस इवेंट पतंजलि योगपीठ एंड आचार्य जी जिस प्रेजेंस इस हेयर विद अस टुडे On this Saturday morning we are here to celebrate India's gift to the world which is yoga and we can save the class for the end June 21 as everybody is now very well aware marks the ninth international yoga day and this time it was celebrated across India and this is the first time that the Prime Minister celebrated it internationally in New York City at the UN headquarters He set the record this time for the maximum number of nationalities being present in a yoga session in one location India moved the resolution in the United Nations to celebrate yoga day in 2014 and this was unanimously adopted by more than 170 countries This day is chosen because one it is the longest day in the year which is the summer solstice There are lot of positive vibrations and energy of the sun that is associated with June 21 and it's also the day that knowledge of yoga is said to be imparted to mankind by the first yogi, adhi yogi Lord Shiva The number of practitioners has grown massively since the first international yoga day was celebrated and this is a holistic practice that combines mind, body and spirit altogether The best thing about yoga is you can do it anywhere, it's a portable practice, you don't need much equipment You don't even need a mat, you can do it pretty much on the grass and it's adaptable for everybody, all ages, all levels of fitness The best thing about yoga is that it is not only a preventative practice but it's a curative practice as well It can cure a lot of ailments in your body So this for us as representatives of India in the UK It is our mission to spread yoga in the farmost, furthermost reaches of the world and the UK This time it was done in a massive way at Rafalgar Square in this week Birmingham consulate also organized a big yoga event last Saturday at Centenary Square in front of the iconic Library Building and Stratford-upon-Avon which is Shakespeare's birthplace Last year we did it in around 22 locations but this time we wanted to exceed our own record so it was done in around 28 locations and this all becomes possible only because of the enthusiastic participation of the community It's not possible for the consulate to do it all alone So I extend a very heartfelt thank you to the community that is with us in spreading the message of yoga everywhere I thank everybody who is here at this event and our message is that it's not just one day that you do yoga but you inculcate it as a way of life in your own lives and you as Indian origin members of the UK you help us in spreading the message in your neighborhoods and your communities in whatever little way you can Thank you and have fun doing yoga today
Thank you very much, Marugin Vada जय धन्यवाद, नमस्ते, रिवर्क करना जो और अब सुनिता जी If I may ask you to come forward please, let's give her a warm welcome please, everybody
I'm sorry, I've got this virus, my throat is gone So Sadvi ji is going to speak on my behalf, my speech So I'll be standing here, she will speak, sorry about that
Definitely this year, every year she is working very hard and she has worked so hard tirelessly that this day her throat is not working well But I would try to convey the feelings of Mataji to everyone in the divine presence of Paramshadde Acharji Maharaj So I'm going to start the speech ओम आयुर्वेद शिरुमणि, परमशद्दे आचार्य जी, महाराज के चरण कमलों में मेरा कोटि-कोटि नमन एवं प्रणाम Good morning, everyone May I extend a very warm welcome to our distinguished guests and our PYPT family and thank you all for being with us today at our celebration of the ninth international day of yoga and our Patanjali परिवार मिलन We are delighted to be hosting this year's event in Nottingham and would like to thank Sohil Jee and our Patansi Yogpit Trust members, teachers and volunteers for all their hard work who teach and promote yoga using their skills and knowledge to uplift and empower others without seeking personal gain Together you make a community impact and embody the spirit of selfless service Parampu Jai, Swamiji Maharaj एवं परमशद्दे आचार्य जी महाराज have created the world's largest charitable initiatives including setting up hospitals, schools and other educational institutions They have played a key role in promoting the use of Ayurvedic remedies and yoga for health and wellness, making a significant contribution to Ayurveda and yoga The theme for this year's international yoga day is Vasudheyva Kuttumbakam which represents one earth, one family and one future which is particularly relevant given the ongoing pandemic The essence of yoga is being one not just balance within the body or that between the mind and the body but also balance in the human relationship with the world In a world that often seems divided and disconnected, the practice of yoga can help us find our way back to a sense of oneness and connection Moreover, by cultivating mindfulness and inner peace, we can become more aware of the struggles and challenges that others face and can work towards creating a more just and equitable society His Royal Highness King Charles suggested that people struggling to return to full health after having the coronavirus should practice yoga In a video statement last year to the Virtual Yoga and Healthcare Symposium Wellness after COVID said doctors should work together with complementary healthcare specialists to build a roadmap to hope and healing after COVID On this international yoga day, let us all take a moment to appreciate the gift of yoga and the many benefits it can bring to our lives Let us also pay the tribute and thanks to Parampu Jai Swamiji Maharaj and Paramshadde Acharji Maharaj who developed this practice and passed it down through their teachings across the globe that will retain for future generations I encourage everyone to take up the practice of yoga and experience its transformative power for themselves Not just India but the whole world will be eternally grateful to Parampu Jai Swamiji and Paramshadde Acharji for their contributions, restoring our heritage and reviving our culture, providing the unparalleled sense of pride and unity So let us embrace the power of yoga and come together and work towards creating a world that is peaceful, harmonious and filled with love Acharji, Paramshadde Acharji is one of the founder members of Patansi Yogpit Trust in India and the United Kingdom He has devoted his entire life to Ayurveda, Sanskrit and yoga He is a pillar of the Patanchali Ayurveda Empire and oversees the manufacturing of natural herbal Ayurvedic remedies and natural everyday products The Patanchali brand is currently one of the leading brands of healthcare in India He has driven passion and commitment to radiating health issues and is actively bridging the gaps in Ayurvedic knowledge and the modern medicine He has published more than 300 research articles, authored more than 200 books on yoga, Ayurveda, agriculture and IT Edited more than 40 unpublished ancient Ayurveda manuscripts and only last week presented 70 volumes of his newly published world herbal encyclopedias to Kew Gardens in London and the Botanic Gardens in Edinburgh The encyclopedias The encyclopedias contain descriptions of 60,000 medicinal plant species and has the world's largest collection of medicinal plants paintings He has been, yes we can clap aloud for this because this is the very big achievement Not for the Patanchali, it is the achievement for whole Sanatan community and this world also He has been honored by the United Nation SDG as one of the 10 most influential people in healthcare and in a study by Stanford University, he is enlisted among the top 2% of scientists across the world And if and if that wasn't enough, in his spare time, he has scaled three inaccessible peaks of the Himalayas to discover and name many rare herbs So also with this information, I would, as Mataji asked to share that this year in the UK on the occasion of international yoga day on 21st June we Patanchali Yogpit परिवार celebrated it at more than 200 places in the United Kingdom Also with this information, ladies and gentlemen, please give a warm welcome to our trustee, Paramshadde Acharji Maharaj
So we pass this day to Acharji Thank you all for coming, thank you
Thank you very much, Zafar Khan, Councillor Jee, Su Swagatam Thank you very much for coming and making it here today to grace your presence, लिए पधारिए I would like to just say few more words if I may and that is आचार्य जी has given such power to Ayurveda that first I used to think that Puja Swamiji Maharaj has taken yoga across the world He was the only first person in the recent times who has done that and after that, every house I go to, I know of कहीं तो आपकी टूथपेस्ट मिलेगी You know कहीं आपने बाथरूम में किसी के घर जाए जरा हाथ पोछते हैं वहां पतंजलि टूथपेस्ट मिलेगी पतंजलि का सोप मिलेगा, पतंजलि शैंपू मिलेगा आचार्य जी आपने घर-घर में आयुर्वेद पहुंचा दिया जी यानी थोड़ा बहुत लाइसेंस भी मिल गया है कि जो बंदा योग नहीं करेगा फिर भी अगर आयुर्वेदिक चीजों का प्रयोग करेगा तो उतना बीमार नहीं पड़ेगा जितना वो केमिकल से पढ़ने वाला था तो आचार्य जी से बिंती करेंगे, आचार्य जी आपके वचनामृत से
भारत माता की वंदे 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 आज अंतरराष्ट्रीय योग दिवस के उपलक्ष्य में यहां पर आप सभी भाई-बहन उपस्थित हैं और इसको भव्य और दिव्य बनाने के लिए पिछले एक महा से हमारी पूज्य साध्वी बहनें यहां पर सेवाएं दे रहे हैं और आज इधर माता सुनिता जी के साथ में और हमारे भट्ट जी और हमारी पूरी टीम और आप सब हमें बड़ा गर्व होता है जब हमको यह दिखता है आप सब एक लव्य की तरह से बिना किसी स्वर्थ के रात-दिन इस योग को विश्वव्यापी बनाने के लिए सेवाएं दे रहे होते यह हमारे लिए लोग कहते हैं किंगलैंड में, UK में जब विदेशों की बात होती है वहां तो फ्री में कुछ नहीं मिलता पर यह पतंजलि का योग है जो हमारे वॉलेंट के स्याम भी फ्री में बांटते हैं मुझको नहीं लगता है पतंजलि के योगा को छोड़कर के आपको कुछ भी इधर फ्री मिलता होगा वो तो पूज्य स्वामी जी की कृपा है लगभग 400 से ज्यादा कक्षाएं हमारी विकेंड पे जो चलती हैं और अभी तक 15-20 वर्षों से लगातार चल रही हैं, लगातार चल रही है COVID के टाइम पर सारी दुनिया ने देखा जो योग पर विश्वास नहीं करते थे, विलिव नहीं करते थे उनको भी विश्वास करना पड़ा कि ये जिंदगी चाहिए तो योग अपनाना पड़ेगा तो आप यहां बैठे हैं सबको यह मैसेज, यह संदेश योग करने से योग का भला नहीं होगा अपना भला चाहिए तो योग करना पड़ेगा तो दुनिया में ऐसा कौन है भला जो नहीं चाहता अपना भला इसीलिए योग करो सदा ठीक है? तो अपनी भलाई के लिए आपको योग करना है और इस योग की परमपुज्यश्रद्धे स्वामी जी ने हमें सौभाग्य, हम सौभाग्यशाली हैं आप लोग में भी बहुत सारे भाई-बहन सौभाग्यशाली हैं जिन्होंने पूज्य स्वामी जी के सानिद्य में योग को सिखा और आज उस योग को एक तपस्वी योगी प्रधानमंत्री के द्वारा यूनाइटेड नेशन में जाकर के एक इंटरनेशनल योगा डे के रूप में उसको पूरा 170 से ज्यादा कंट्रीज को बाधिकिया कि योग को इंटरनेशनल डे के रूप में आगे हर साल बनाया जाए तो इसके कारण से आज दुनिया में आप यहां बैठे हैं हो सकता है कि बहुत को हमारी हिंदी कम समझ में आती हो पर योगा क्या है? वह लगभग सबको समझ में आती है सबको पता है बहुत ज्यादा नहीं पता, हमको बहुत डीप नॉलेज नभी हो मेडिटेशन, योग के, यम-अनियम, आसन, प्रणायम, प्रत्यारधारणा, ध्यान, समाधि और गहरी-गहरी बातें बेसक आपको पता ना हो पर आपको पता है कि थोड़ा वृद्धि एक्सरसाइज करनी है, थोड़े बहुत हाथ और टांग उठाना है, उसका नाम योग है इतना ही करते हो शास्त्रों में लिखा है, योगे ना योग संपद्यते बहुत सरल है इसका, इसका मीनिंग यह है कि आप योग करोगे तो योग से योग का रास्ता खुलता ही जाएगा कि आप योगी बनकर के योग करना जरूरी नहीं है योग करोगे तो किया हुआ योग आपको योगी बना देगा ध्यान रखना कई लोग कहते हैं कि हम तो बहुत सारी चीजों का पालन नहीं करते हैं हम क्या करें? योग करना शुरू कर दोगे तो चीजें तो अपने आप ठीक होने लग जाएंगी हम लोगों ने एक बहुत बड़ा लग, 1 and half million, लगभग 15 लाख लोगों का हम लोगों ने एक स्टडी किया था India में, साइकोसोमेटिक स्टडी हमने यह देखा कि योग करने से क्या चेंजेस होते हैं तो योग करने से ऐसे चेंजेस हो जाएंगे फिजिकल लेवल पर, मेंटल लेवल पर, स्पिरिचुअल लेवल पर आपकी आदतें, खान, पान, व्यवहार, स्वभाव, हर एक लेवल पर आपको पता भी नहीं चलेगा वो सब कुछ चेंजेस, पॉजिटिव चेंजेस होंगे जीवन के लिए सकारात्मक होंगे, जीवन को उन्नति देने वाले होंगे जीवन को सुख और सकुन और शांति देने वाले होंगे जिंदगी में दुख तो कोई नहीं चाहता है चाहे हम देश में हैं, विदेश में हैं किसी भी कल्चर और कम्युनिटी को विलॉन करते हो कोई भी दुख नहीं चाहता है दुख से बचना चाहता है दुख से हम दूर भागते हैं पर दुख है कि हमारा पीछा नहीं छोड़ता है जिंदगी में दो सुख के लिए 10 दुख उठाते हैं सुख तो पता नहीं चलता है, दुख और सामने खड़े दिखाई देते हैं हमको लगता है जीवन में थोड़ी सी उन्नति हुएगी तो सुख आएगा थोड़ा सा सुख आया पर और दुख आगे खड़े दिखाई देते हैं तो इससे निवृत्ति का उपाय क्या है? इसे दुख से छूटने का उपाय क्या है? इसे दुख से बचने का उपाय क्या है? तो संसार में दुख से बचने का कोई उपाय है तो मात्र योग है योग के सरण में जाकर के ही हम दुख से बच सकते हैं इसीलिए आप यहां पर इतनी संख्या में पधारे योग के प्रति कहीं ना कहीं आपकी भावना है, आपकी जागरूकता है, आपकी चेतनता है कि पतंजलि YOGPIT, ट्रस्ट UK के माध्यम से माता सुनिता जी, Sohil जी, पूरी टीम, जितने भी लोग लगे, मैं देखता हूं मुझे लगता है थोड़े यंगस्व से इसमें दिखाई दे रहे हैं, युवा, युवतियां हमारे, युवान और जो युवतियां हैं वो आ गए हैं हमारे टीचर्स सारे बूटे-बूटे से हो गए क्योंकि बहुत दिन से लगे हाँ, यह मानने को तैयार नहीं है क्योंकि शरीर की एज है, इनके दिमाग तो बच्चों वाला है
आचार्य जी, आपको देखना
यह देखो, यह यही कितनी बड़ी बात है, है न? यह योग का कमाल है इसीलिए मैंने इनको थोड़ा सा छेड़ा तो बात यह है कि जो योग करेगा वो शरीर की आयु तो है, एज तो है पर वह एज आयु भी नहीं दिखाई देगा क्योंकि वह योगी का शरीर होगा तो अगली पीडी भी जुड़े, आगे भी आकर के लोग योग करें, यह बहुत जरूरी है तो क्योंकि योग देखो, मैं आपको थोड़ा सा निविधन करके मैं बहुत सिंपल हिंदी में बोल रहा हूं मैं क्योंकि हिंदी में अपनी बात को सही ढंग से कम्युनिकेट कर सकता हूं योग हमारे ऋषियों की, हमारी महर्षियों की आप धार्मिक मान्यता के अनुसार आप अलग-अलग देवी, देवता, परम्परा और अलग-अलग संप्रदाय, कल्चर या बहुत सारे लोगों को आप लोग फॉलो करते होंगे करते रहो, जिसको मानते हो, हम कोई बात नहीं कह रहे पर योग एक ऐसे चिंता है, हम सबको एक अमृणा के नीचे लाने का कोई काम कर सकता है तो योग है योग हमारे ऋषियों के द्वारा दिया, योग कोई धर्म नहीं है, यह समझ लो पर योग को स्थापित करने वाले, योग को जिन्होंने रिसर्च किया, जिन्होंने योग का यह स्रूप दिया वो सभी ऋषि, महर्षि लोग, वो सब हमारे वैदिक सनातन परम्परा के ही लोग थे, इसलिए हमें गर्व है उस योग को हम पूरी विश्व में पहुंचा करके विश्व को निरोक बनाने में अपनी सहभागीता और हम अपना योगदान दे दें जिससे यह योग पूरी दुनिया को एक सूत्र में पीरोने का काम कर सके एक सूत्र में बांधने का काम कर सके ग्लोबाइजेशन की बात आज की जाती है, दुनिया ग्लोबाइजेशन की बात करती है पर हमारे ऋषियों ने तो हजारों-हजारों वर्ष पहले Vasudheyva Kuttumbakam कहकर के यह कहा था कि यह पूरा संसार हमारे लिए एक परिवार है यह ऋषि लोग ही कह सकते थे, बाकी दुनिया में कोई नहीं कहता है योग हमारी एक ऐसी संस्कृति है, अभी अपने पटेजी के उसमें बहुत सुंदर यज्ञ किया हम जब प्रार्थना करते हैं ना, हिंदु सनातन वैदिक परम्परा में हम इंडिविजुअल के लिए, पोर्शनल के लिए कुछ भी डिमांड नहीं करते यह हमारी संस्कृति में ही है, ध्यान रखना बाकी लोगों में तो अपने लिए हम डिमांड होती है यहां तो हम बैठकर के हम कहते हैं Sarve bhavantu sukhe na, sarve santu nira maya Sarve bhadrana vashyantu ma kashchit dukh bhag bhavet कि हे भगवान Sarve bhavantu sukhe na जो भी दुनिया में है, सब सुखी हो कोई दुखी ना हो यह सिर्फ हिंदु सनातन संस्कृति ही ऐसा उद्घोष करती है, दुनिया में दूसरा कोई नहीं करता तो आप उस कल्चर, उस संस्कृति, उस परम्परा के आप सम्वाहक हैं, संग्रक्षक हैं आपको उसकी रक्षा करनी है अपनी फैमिली में, अपनी सोसाइटी में, अपने परिवार में, उन परम्पराओं को आपको आगे बढ़ाना है आगे बढ़ते हुए, उसके द्वारा विश्व में शांति स्थापित करने का दायित्व भी वो आपका और हमारा है क्योंकि हम दुनिया की सुख की बात करते हैं, तो दुनिया में अशांति से बचाने का काम भी आप और हम भी कर सकते हैं तो आज इस पावन अवसर पर, मुझे बहुत समय के बाद, 6 वर्ष के बाद मैं आया हूं 5-6 years के बाद मैं UK आया हूं तो आज आप सबको देखकर के मुझे बड़ी खुशी है, अच्छा लग रहा है, इतना ही समझे आप बाकी कितनी बात समझ में आ गई कोई बात नहीं, पर इतना समझ रहे ना योग करना, अपनी जितने भी हमारी धार्मिक, आध्यात्मिक मान्यताएं हैं उनके साथ में रहना, मस्त रहना, खुश रहना, मुस्कुराते रहना तो दुख से भी बचोगे और दुख का पिंड छूटेगा दुख हमारे आसपास में भी नहीं पटकने पाएगा, नहीं आने पाएगा तो आप सब जुड़े हैं भावना से परमश्रद्धेश्वर स्वामी जी की सुखमुपस्थिति उनके पावन संदेश को भी क्योंकि पूज्य महाराष्ट्री की भी बड़ी इच्छा आप सबको लेकर के आपके प्रति उनकी सुविच्छा रहती है, सुबकामनाएं रहती है और भारत में इस बार आदरणीय नरेंद्र मोदी जी की जो दृष्टि है, जो सोच है हमारी कल्चर और संस्कृता आज दुनिया में पहुंच रही है और हम जहाँ भी हैं अपने हिस्से का कम से कम हम भी काम करें यह हमारा कर्तव्य तो आप सबको बहुत सुबकामनाएं हैं क्योंकि अभी योगा सत्र होने वाला है योग होगा, कुछ हम भी करेंगे, कुछ हमारी साध्वी बहनें करेंगी और सब कार्यक्रम होगा तो मैं ज्यादा समय ना लेकर के, अभी बहुत समय रहने वाले हैं खाने-पीने की भी व्यवस्था बढ़िया कर रखी है तो सात्विक भोजन भी मिलेगा आज सट्टे का दिन है, मौसम भी अच्छा है क्योंकि कभी धूप, कभी छाव, तो बढ़िया है तो इसी तरह से आप आनंद में रहिए बहुत-बहुत धन्यवाद, आप सबको बहुत-बहुत प्रणाम
आचार्य जी, हमारे यहाँ के काउंसिलर हैं और उनका नाम विशेष है हरियोम जी आपका आशीर्वाद लेने पधारे
हमारे हरियोम जी को हरियोम ये व्यवस्था में लगे हैं इन्होंने बता दिया, ये भी बड़े धार्मिक व्यक्ति हैं और हमारे हरिद्वार में ही एक बहुत अच्छी संस्था है शांतिकुंज से जुड़े हुए हैं चलो पतंजलि वाला काम भी जुड़ करके कर ठेका जी, आचार्य पंडित श्रीराम शर्मा जी जो योगपुरुष हुए हैं, बहुत ही दिव्य महापुरुष हुए हैं उन्हीं लक्ष्य को कि उन्होंने वेद की संस्कृति को दुनिया में पहुंचाने का काम किया तो उनके शिष्य लोग ये कर रहे हैं तो पतंजलि के साथ जुड़ करके भी हरियोम जी सेवा करेंगे, बहुत-बहुत धन्यवाद
धन्यवाद, धन्यवाद जी थैंक यू और अब मुझे आचार्य जी की आज्जा से आगे बढ़ाता हूं मैंने संपर्क दूरभाष्य से किया था जिनसे पहले उनको फ्यू वीक्स पहले उनका आना था, मुझे पता था तो मुझे कुतुहल था कि ये कौन होंगे, कैसे हैं होंगे, क्या करेंगे और एक बात हमारे में कहावत होती है गुजराती में आचार्य जी के मोरना इंडा चितरवा न पड़े तो ये इनके जो लेफ्ट में और राइट में खड़े हैं उसको मैं लौकिक भाषा में थोड़ा इंट्रोड्यूस करने का प्रयास करूंगा हमारे पूज्य आज साध्वी जी पधारी हैं, आप देख रहे हैं दोनों तरफ एक-एक करके उनसे थोड़ा मैं आपका पहचान करवाऊंगा सुमधुर कंठ से सुमधुर वाणी और अलहदक भजन गा करके जिसके नाम में वाणी छुपी हुई है देवाणी जी को मेरा प्रणाम और मैं देख रहा था कि योग हो रहा है, चारों तरफ एक्साइटमेंट है और एक के बाद एक इतने सारे योगा के जो कार्यक्रम होते हैं सुबह-शाम व्हाट आई वाज गोइंग तू से वाज डेट आई वाज ट्राइंग तू अंडरस्टैंड डेट हु इस दिस न्यू पर्सन हु इस अराइविंग तू अस बिकॉज़ वी न्यू वेरी वेल पूज्य आचार्य जी एंड पूज्य स्वामी जी फॉर लॉन्ग टाइम सो वी मोस्ट ऑफ अस हैव बीन विथ स्वामी जी एंड आचार्य जी फ्रॉम 2006 है न? तभी मेरे काले बाल थे, अब देखो व्हाइट होना शुरू हो गए अभी सल्ट एंड पेपर वाली बात है ओहे-ओहे, क्या बात चलो सही बात है, आपने वास्तविकता पे ला के मुझे बिठा दिया तो मैं कह रहा था कि इतने क्लासेस हुए हैं पूरे युक्त में देयर हैव बीन सो मेनी क्लासेस इन इंग्लैंड विच हैव नेवर बीन बिफोर इन माय आइस एंड दे हैव बीन लेड ग्रेटली एंड अमेजिंगली बाय पूज्य साध्वी देवती टीचर आई वुड अर्ज यू ऑल तू विजिट हर फेसबुक पेज एस वेल बिकॉज़ यू विल सी डेट शी इस सो प्रोफाउंड इन हर विस्तम शी एक्सप्लेन्स वेरी वेल एंड शी इस वेरी हाईली आर्टिकुलेट आई वुड नॉट वांट तू वेस्ट एनी मोर टाइम डॉक्टर अनुराग जी, ही इस डी हेड ऑफ अर रिसर्च आइए डॉक्टर साहब, पधारिए
ओम
ओम
गुड आफ्टनून एवरीवन आई होप आई एम ऑडिबल ना, देयर वी गो सो परमपूज्य आचार्य श्री के चरणों में सादर प्रणाम करते हुए और परमपूज्य स्वामी जी की सूच उपस्थिति को नमन करते हुए मैं आप सबके सामने खड़ा हुआ हूं और मुझे बहुत अच्छी वाली फिल्म सो व्हाट आई एम गोइंग तू टॉक टुडे एंड एक्चुअली आचार्य जी जस्ट टॉक तू यू रिगार्डिंग योगा एंड आई विल जस्ट टेक यू अन लिटिल बिट अबाउट आयुर्वेद हाउ डी आयुर्वेद डी अन्यथ डायमेंशन ऑफ अन हेल्दी लिविंग इट्स अन क्रिटिकल कंपोनेंट फॉर कीपिंग अवरसेल्फ हेल्दी एंड इफ वी गेट सिक तू गेट एक्चुअली ट्रीटेड सो इन मोस्ट ऑफ डी पार्ट ऑफ डी वर्ल्ड इंक्लूडिंग सम पार्ट ऑफ इंडिया एस वेल आयुर्वेद हैव बीन सीन एस अन सेकंड लाइन ऑफ ट्रीटमेंट इट्स नॉट कंसीडर हैव नॉट बीन कंसीडर्ड एस अन मेनिस्ट्री मेडिसिन सिस्टम विथ डी ब्लेसिंग्स फ्रॉम आचार्य जी एंड स्वामी जी डी होल प्लानिंग ऑफ पतंजलि हैव कम ऑन तू पुट आयुर्वेद ऑन डी सेंट्रल स्टेज वेयर दिस बिकम्स डी फर्स्ट एंड फॉरमोस्ट चॉइस ऑफ डी मेडिसिनल सिस्टम फॉर डी पीपल हु आर सफरिंग फ्रॉम वेरियस डिजीजेस सो व्हाट आचार्य जी हैव प्लांट एंड एक्चुअली हैव डॉन सेवरल डिकेट्स बिफोर डेट एनीवन कैट कोड अप थिंक ऑफ डेट वी हैव जनरेटेड अन सॉर्ट ऑफ एविडेंसेस विच आर क्रिटिकल फॉर एनी मेडिसिन तू गो फॉर क्लिनिकल उस व्हाट इस डेट व्हाट इस डेट मीन? डेट व्हेन यू आर टॉकिंग अबाउट डी मेडिसिन व्हेन यू टेक डी मेडिसिन इनसाइड यू एथर ओरली और बाय इंजेक्शन इट इस गोइंग तू वर्क लाइक एन बियोकेमिस्ट्री व्हाट इस डेट वुड मीन डेट गोइंग तू गो एंड इंगेज एन टारगेट एंड गोइंग तू गिव सम ट्रीटमेंट बेनिफिट्स इन एलिपेथिक सिस्टम इट्स वेरी वेल नोन वी नो व्हाट्स अन मोड ऑफ एक्शन इन आयुर्वेद डेट हैव बीन डी बिगर गैप सो व्हाट आचार्य जी हैव प्लांट सेवरल इयर्स बिफोर तू ब्रिज डेट गैप एंड नॉव इन आयुर्वेद वी आर डिवेलपिंग डोस सॉर्ट ऑफ एविडेंसेस एंड वी आर ट्राइंग तू फाइंड आउट हाउ डोस ड्रग्स डी व्हान विच हैव बीन डेसक्राइड बाय आर अंशियन सजेस फॉर सेवरल सेंचुरीज वी नो दे वर्क वेरी वेल बट वी डिन नो हाउ डोस वर्क सो डेट हैव लेड तू अन वेरी नाइस एक्सेप्टेंस ऑफ आयुर्वेद अक्रॉस डी बाउंट्रीज ऑफ इंडिया सो नॉव व्हाट वी आर सीइंग इट
In the earlier version, the names are very arbitrary in nature. People will name it as their friend. Someone has named the name of the plant as their dogs, cats, pets. And sometime people whom they don't like, if they have an enemy and they find a plant that stinks, they have given the name of the plants with the same enemy as well. So this is like no logic per se. But what Acharji has now done and PRF has now delivered to name each and every plant in a Sanskrit binomial name which would actually explain the property and the appearance and the characterization of a plant just by the name itself. So yesterday when we presented this information to the Kew Garden professionals, their scientists and the whole team of management, they were super impressed with that because they also generate a plant list. But again, they also having the same problem because they cannot define each and every time. So what they have agreed, in fact, they proposed that, that if Patanjali Research Foundation could share a list of those Sanskrit binomial name plants and they would be very happy to put it on the Kew server as well. So Kew plant list would now have all the plant name in the Sanskrit as well. So which is a big, big, big finding. That shows that we are now taking the language of our ancient system Sanskrit towards a global level. Now it becomes a scientific language which would be accepted by the scientific word across the world. So this have been the fantastic thing and we have been traveling for last so many days and I am feeling very much blessed to be here and seeing all of you gathering up this afternoon and hearing up and go for the next shot of yoga. So thank you very much, all of you. Thanks a lot and have a good day ahead.
Thank you very much, Dr. Saab. And we would now like to welcome our yoga session now. We are going to do yoga protocol with Adarneye Sadhvi ji. Guys, if you all want to get ready for your yoga, get your mats sorted and you are going to get some full action now.
Thank you, Pratajee. Within the very divine presence of Paramshadde Acharji Maharaj, I would like to take this as an opportunity also to remember his holiness Parampuja Swameyji Maharaj and with the blessings of Parampuja Swameyji Maharaj and Paramshadde Achar Shri Maharaj. We heard a very motivating and inspirational speech from Acharji. And once again, I would request you all to please have a great round of applause for Paramshadde Achar Shri Maharaj. Let us everyone feel this presence in England also, that someone has come from India and now we are taking this yoga and Ayurveda further to next flavors, new levels. And with this also, we have Puja Satviji, Puja Satvadevani ji, our trustee of Patanjali Yopit Trust UK, Adarneye Puja Sunitha Mata ji, also the coordinator of UK, Adarneye Sohel Pratajee, Adarneye Shavan ji and also the representatives from the council, the council, Adarneye Ammanath ji and every guest present here and every family member, namaste to everyone, pranam to everyone. Now let us begin with the session of yoga with the chanting of Om for three times and the chanting of four mantras. And those who are learned with the four mantras, that's great, we would be joining together and those who are not, please close your eyes and just feel the meanings of the mantras. Please straighten up your back, keep your neck straight, close your eyes gently, place both of your hands in Dhyan Mudra by joining the tips of thumb and four finger together, keeping the rest of the fingers stretched over your knees, place them over your knees. With the deep breathing, let us start with the chanting of Om for three times. Now the chanting of mantras. Everyone, please raise your hands, rub them together and transfer the energy created within the palms to your face and slowly and slowly open your eyes with the blinking of eyes, eyelids. And once again, in the very divine and holy presence of Paramshadde Achar Shri Maharaj, welcome and namaste to everyone. Now let us move towards the physical part of yoga as Parampuja Swameyji Maharaj has always said to us that two hours of yoga and 24 hours of karma yoga. So yoga is very, very much more than what we do physically but to do it internally and eternally, we need to do the practice of physical part also. Let us start with the exercises and for that I would request you all to please stand up at your positions. We would be starting with certain stretching and stretching exercises, subtle exercises. Take your positions. And the first one is to please keep, place your hands over your trunk. Even the god has blessed us with the clouds, everyone was feeling very hot. So it is very cloudy and soothing now. Let us start with the neck movement. First of all, breathe out and bend your neck in the forward direction, then breathe in, bend in the backward direction. Breathe out. Breathe in. This is very beneficial for those who are suffering from cervical spondylitis. We would be repeating each and every exercise for around three to four times. So this was the bending in back and forward and backward direction. Now turn your neck towards the right direction with deep breathing. Slowly, slowly move it towards the left. Now towards the right. Slowly and slowly move it towards the left. The turning of your neck. And also feel the changes, the vibrations, the sensations inside your neck and the part which is getting affected with the movement of any exercise we are doing. Now let us move towards the next part which is the bending of our neck in the right and left direction. With the deep breathing, inhale deeply, exhale completely. Inhale and exhale the bending in right and left direction. Now the fourth part of neck exercises, to rotate your neck in left to right direction, clockwise, anti-clockwise in both the directions, slowly and slowly. Now this is the anti-clockwise direction in which we are moving from left to right direction. Now in the reverse direction, right to left with deep breathing, relax your neck completely and feel the sensations inside your muscles and nerves also. Now the next is after the neck bending, the next is the movement of the shoulders. For this, place your hands, both of your hands over your shoulder and rotate them in the forward direction, take them to the backward while moving your elbows in the front direction, try to touch your elbows and open up your arms as much as possible. Breathe in, breathe out. With deep breathing, the practice of this exercise relaxes the muscles of your shoulders. It is also very beneficial for those who are suffering from cervical and spondylitis. Now reverse it in the reverse direction, let us move these shoulders and try to touch your elbows together when you are bringing your hands in the forward direction. With deep breathing, inhale and exhale completely. Now the next part of exercise is the movement of our trunk. For the movement of trunk, let us open our, stretch your arms in the front direction and we will, we would be moving in the backward direction. Bring your right hand in the back and place your left hand over your right knee, right shoulder. Come back once again. Breathe in, breathe out while you are moving towards the left and right direction. Breathe in, breathe out in the right direction. Breathe in, breathe out in the left direction. Drop down your hands, stretch your arms once again in the forward direction, bend your knees a little. This is the exercise for our knees. Breathe in and breathe out completely. So this is the exercise for our knees. Drop your hands once again. And now we would be moving towards the next stretching exercises in which first we are going to perform the practice of forward bending with which I would like to request everyone, those who are suffering from back ache or those who are suffering from knee pain, please, sorry, back ache, back pain only, please don't bend in the forward direction or you can bend up to the limit which your body allows. So we are doing, going to do yoga but according to our capacities, raise your hands in the upward directions and now breathe out and bend in forward direction and those who are suffering from back ache, please don't take the risk, bend your back up to the limit your body allows. Then breathe in. Raise your body once again in the upward direction. Breathe out. Try to place your palms beside your legs, your feet and also try to touch your knees with your forehead. This is the perfect position and do up to your capacity. Breathe in, drop your hands and even the god is showering us with the flowers. Now place your hands over your trunk and we would be doing the backward bending. For backward bending, breathe in and bend your back in the backward direction. Breathe out, once again come back. And those who are suffering from cervical and spondylitis kindly bend your neck only. Once again, breathe in and bend your back. Those who are suffering from cervical or spondylitis only bend your neck, don't bend your back in the backward direction. Breathe out, come back once again. So this was the forward bending and the reverse bending. Drop your hands once again. Now the side bending and for the side bending, stretch out your right hand, right leg in the right direction and raise your right, left hand in the upward direction and bend in the right direction, keep your left arm in the upward direction only and try to watch it out while you are bringing your right hand from the thigh to the ankle. So this is Trikona Asan. Once again, come back in the starting posture. Now stretch your left leg in the left direction and raise your right hand in the upward direction. Slowly, slowly bend down in the left direction, keep your right hand in the upward direction. Try to watch out your right hand and take your left hand to the feet. Once again, come back. Once again, we would be doing it from the right direction. In the right direction, stretch your right leg, keep the left arm in the upward direction only with the deep breathing, the practice of Trikona Asan. Come back. Now in the left direction, in the opposite direction, raise your right hand, place your, take your left hand to the left ankle and watch your right hand which is in the upward direction by turning your neck. Come back once again. So this was the practice of stretching in left and right direction. Now we would be lifting our body for that purpose, interlock your hands, place them over your head. This is the practice of Tadasan. Breathe in and raise your body, lift your body in the upward direction or try to lift your heels also but if anyone has a lot of knee pain or those who are not able to balance by lifting the heels, they can keep their heels over the floor only. Breathe out, come back. Once again, breathe in. And while you are lifting your arms in the upward direction, try to keep your elbows straight, try to keep your elbows straight, relax, breathe out. Once again, one more time, the practice of Tadasana and feel the stretching in your hands, in your arms, in your forearms, in your shoulders, in your chest, in your stomach, in your thighs, in your calves, in your feet, feel the stretching everywhere. Once again, come down, breathe out, come down. So this was the practice of Tadasan. Now let us move towards the next practice which is the practice of Drowasana. Keep your left leg over the floor only, raise your right leg and place your right feet over your left thigh in which heel should be in the upward direction and toes should be facing the earth. Breathe in slowly and slowly, raise your hands in the upward direction, try to keep your elbows straight. So this is the practice of Drowasana, Vrikshasana. And those who are not able to lift up the leg in the upward direction, that's totally fine, you can just raise your hands in the upward direction and join them. So it is okay if you are able to do it halfway because yoga is something which is to increase our strength, not to actually, it is not for those, not for actually exploiting our strength. Now we are doing it from the other direction. Place your left leg, left feet over your right thigh, heels in the upward direction and toes in the lower direction, join your hands, try to keep your elbows straight, the practice of Vrikshasana, relax. So after the practice of these stretching exercises, now we are moving towards the exercises in the sitting posture. Everyone, please sit down at your places. So first of the exercise in the sitting posture is Vajrasana. For that, everyone stretched in the forward direction. So this is the Vajrasana. And after the practice of Vajrasana, which is the only asan we can perform after having our meal and we should try to practice it for five to 10 minutes but those again who are suffering from knee pain kindly don't bend your knees. So this was the practice of Vajrasana. And after the practice of Vajrasana, next is the practice of Ustrasana, Ard Ustrasana, then Ustrasana, camel pose, half camel pose. For the camel pose and also the half camel pose, raise on your knees, try to keep a space between your knees, knees parallel to your shoulders, place your hands over the thighs, sorry, over the trunk. Firstly, we would be doing the practice of Ard Ustrasana. And for the practice of Ard Ustrasana, place your hands over your trunk and breathe in, bend your back in the backward direction. This is the practice of Ard Ustrasana. And those who are not able to perform Ustrasana, they can keep performing Ard Ustrasana in this second posture also. And this asan is very beneficial for those who are suffering from thyroid, either hyperthyroid or hypothyroid or back pain, also good for our lungs. Come back, breathe in, breathe out and come back. Now place your hands over the thighs. The next asan is Ustrasana. And those who feel, don't feel comfortable in doing this Ustrasana, practicing this Ustrasana can keep doing Ard Ustrasana. Raise your right hand in the upward direction and then place the right hand over your right heel, then raise your left hand and place it over your left heel with the breathing, with the deep breathing inhalation. So I was speaking about the benefits of Ustrasana, thyroid, back pain, also good for our, for the health of our lungs and together with that, it is useful for those who are suffering from tonsils also, very beneficial in the back pain. Breathe out, come back once again. First bring your left hand in the forward direction, then the right one. So this was the practice of Ustrasana, the camel pose. And after the camel pose, we are going to perform the Bhadrasana. For that, please stretch your legs in the front direction and then bend your knees such that you would be joining the feet together, like this. So particularly, this is Bhadrasana in which we have to join, we have to touch the floor with our, our knees. And sometimes because we are practiced to the butterfly, so we start feeling like if we are in the Bhadrasana pose, we should do some butterfly also, which is also very beneficial and I think as we have heard from Puja Swameyji Natcharshi Maharaj, that a practice of at least one minute of butterfly is beneficial for everyone, we should try to benefit, take benefit out of it. It is also good for the strength of our pelvic region, very beneficial for all the male and female related issues. And this seems to be simple but this practice of butterfly is very beneficial. Now we would be moving towards the next practice and for the next practice which is the practice of Uttan Mandukasana. Once again, stretch your legs in the front direction and for Uttan Mandukasana, once again, we have to come in the Vajrasana posture, like this and then bend your left one. Keep some space between your knees, between your legs. Raise your right hand and place the right hand over your left shoulder. Now raise your left hand and place it over your right shoulder. So this is the practice of the Uttan Mandukasana. Please bend your knees, the knees should be banded. Sit, you have to sit in this posture like in Vajrasana you are sitting but you just have to keep some space between both of your knees. Keep your back straight, keep your neck straight. So this was the practice of Uttan Mandukasana. And after the practice of Uttan Mandukasana, once again, stretch, come back and once again, stretch your legs in the front direction because now we would be doing the practice of Vakrasana. And for the practice of Vakrasana, bend your right knee, try to place the thumb of your right knee right near to left knee. Place your right hand at the back and with the help of left hand, just press your right knee towards your stomach. After this, turn your neck in the right direction and after making a angle of 180 degree between your head and between your leg, try to watch out at the back. So this is the practice of Vakrasana. Return back, which is very beneficial for the health of our gut, for stomach, from the opposite direction. Bend your left knee, place your left hand in the, in the back and with the help of your right hand, try to press this left knee towards the stomach. Try to watch out at the back from above your shoulder. So this is the practice of Vakrasana as I was saying, this is very beneficial for those who are suffering from gastric issues, constipation issues and digestion issues. It is very good for our stomach and also very beneficial for those who are suffering from back pain. Relax, come back, come back again in the normal posture. So these were the exercises we performed in the sitting posture. Now we are moving towards the exercise which we would be performing in the sleeping posture and I would request you all to please sleep from the side of your stomach first. So for that, this is the practice of Makarasana which we are going to do and then do, in Makarasana, we would be performing, practicing in the first in the relaxing posture. For relaxing posture, place your left hand over the floor and the right one over the left one, place your forehead over your right hand, keep your legs together at the back. You can keep touching left and right leg together. So this is the practice of Makarasana which is very relaxing during practice. If we get tired, then we can relax in this posture for a while. And for the relaxation also, bring your concentration over your breathing. Inhalation and exhalation process should be observed deeply. With that, we feel relaxation in each and every body part very immediately. After the practice of Makarasana, now let us move towards the practice of Bhujangasana. For this, place your hands right beside your chest and your chin over the floor. Breathe in and raise your chest in the upward direction. Keep your elbows straight, try looking in the upward direction. And it is sun so you can't look, so you can close your eyes too. So this is the practice of Bhujangasana which is very beneficial for lungs again, for the back pain, also beneficial for those who are suffering from thyroid and also it reduces the weight over the chest. Breathe out, slowly and slowly come back to the starting posture. So this was the practice of Bhujangasana. Now the next practice in which we have to place our hands beneath our thighs. Keep touching the floor with your chin, also try to place your shoulders over the floor. Breathe in and raise your right leg in the upward direction. While raising the leg, also try to keep your knees straight. Breathe out, bring the right leg in the lower direction now, drop it down and once again, from the left side, breathe in and raise your left leg in the upward direction. So this is the practice of Shalabhasana. And Shalabhasana is very beneficial from, for those who are suffering from any kind of back pain. So those who are suffering from back pain, they are supposed to practice it with alternatively with both the legs, both alternatively but don't perform with both the legs together. And those who are not suffering from back ache, they can just perform it with both legs together, breathe in and raise both of the legs in the forward direction, keep your, try to keep your knees straight. Also this Shalabhasana is beneficial for those who are suffering from sciatic also. Breathe down, breathe out and bring your legs in the lower direction. And after the practice of this Shalabhasana, next exercises also we have to perform in the sleeping posture but now we have to sleep from the side of our spine, our back. So turn and rotate and sleep from the side of your back. And for this, first of all, we have to practice Uttan Padhasana. Try to place both of your hands together to near to your body. And for the practice of Uttan Asan, breathe in, raise your legs in the upward direction, try to keep an angle of 30 to 45 degree between the floor and the legs, try to keep your knees straight. So this is the practice of Uttan Padhasana which is very, very beneficial for those who are suffering from stomach related issues and also this is beneficial in the cases of diabetes also. Breathe out, bring your legs in the lower direction. Now the practice of Ard Halasana. For the practice of Ard Halasana, we have to now raise our legs a little forward, like we have to make an angle of 90 degree between the legs and the floor. So raise your legs while breathing in. Now also keep your knees straight. So this is the practice of Ard Halasana. Breathe out, slowly and slowly bring your legs in the lower direction. So this was the practice of Ard Halasana. And after the practice of Ard Halasana, next posture is the practice of Pavan Mukthasana. For the practice of Pavan Mukthasana, we would be doing it with the legs alternatively. So first bend your right knee, interlock your hands and after interlocking your hands, hold your knee with your hands, breathe out slowly and slowly and bring your knees towards your Breathe out slowly and slowly and bring your knees towards your chest by pressing the stomach. And also, those who are suffering from cervical spondylitis or back pain, please don't raise your neck, otherwise we can raise our neck and touch the knees with our nose. So this is the practice of Pavan Muktasana from right side. Relax. Now practice it from the left side. Bend your knees, interlock your hands, bring your knees with the help of your hands towards the chest. Breathe out and try to touch your knees with your nose, relax. And now the practice of Pavan Muktasana with both the legs together. Bend your knees, interlock your hands and hold your knees together within your interlocked hands. Breathe out, raise your neck and try to place your nose between your two knees. But those who are suffering from back ache or cervical or spondylitis, kindly don't raise your neck in the upward direction. Relax. So this was the practice of Pavan Muktasana, which again is very beneficial for those who are suffering from issues related to stomach. And also very beneficial for those who are suffering from diabetes. So after the practice of Pavan Muktasana, now the next is the practice of Savasana. And for the practice of Savasana, relax your body. Remove any kind of clutcher if you have in your hair. And also remove any goggle or specs if you are wearing. Just close your eyes gently. Keep a very little space between your hands and body and also between your legs. With a gentle closing of your eyes. Now we would be relaxing our complete body by relaxing all the muscles of the body. And for that purpose, we would be taking our focus to each and every body part. Let us first bring our focus, our concentration towards the breathing. Breathe in and breathe out and just keep your focus over the breathing. And as soon as we lift our focus, our concentration towards the breathing, we can feel a change inside that our breathing gets long, longer, deeper. And now we are ready to relax our whole body. So bring your focus towards your legs, the toes, and relax each and every muscle of all the toes. After relaxing that part, now bring your focus towards your feet, ankle, heel. Relax all the muscles there. And after, there should be no tension in any part now. And now move your focus, your concentration towards your calf muscles, relax them properly. You can feel that now there is no tension or stress in the muscles here. And after this, we can now relax our knees, right and left thigh, right and left hips, relax them. And after relaxing the legs, both of the legs, all the muscles are now in the relaxed mood. Shift your focus towards your spine. And from the lower part of the spine towards the upper part of the spine, relax your complete back and spine. And after relaxing each and every part, now bring your focus towards the shoulder, right and left shoulder, relax them. If there is any kind of a stress, just relax. With the thinking, we can relax each and every body part. Now bring your focus towards your right and left arm. Relax them, right and left elbow. Relax them again, right and left forearm. Relax them too, right and left wrist, relax them too. And after that, bring your focus towards your hands and palms and all the fingers of the hands, relax them. Remove any kind of tension or stress if you are carrying in any part of the body we have discussed about. And now move to your focus towards the neck. Remove any kind of stress in the neck, relax your neck muscles. Now bring your focus towards your brain, right and left part of the brain, relax it. Now the forehead. Now move towards your eyebrows, relax right and left eyes. Relax right and left ear, now the chin, right and left chin. Now relax your light and left nostrils also. And after relaxing your nostrils, now bring your focus towards your chin, relax the muscles of your chin also. And after that, bring your focus towards your lips, the upper and lower lips, relax them. Upper and lower part of the tooth, relax them too and the gums. Now relax your tongue also. You can feel that there is a relaxation in complete face. And after that, bring your focus towards your right and left lung. And also there is a heart between the lungs, relax them too. And now the whole complete chest is in the relaxing posture, there is no stress in face and chest. Now bring your focus towards your stomach region. Just relax your stomach, right part, the liver, the gallbladder, left part, the pancreas and spleen, relax them, the small intestine, the large intestine. And also the anus, relax each and every part. Now relax the right and left kidneys also, which are just below your lungs in the backward direction. And now relax your urinary bladder, urinary system. Now we can feel that there is a complete relaxation in each and every body part. And we can just feel that with each and every breathing, we are inhaling the energy from the God. And within each and every exhalation, we are now able to release any kind of stress, tension, depression in muscles or in our heart or in our mind. Feel that relaxation, we are getting lighter with this feeling. And after this relaxation process, now bring your back body back again into the active mode. For that, move your toes, close your fist and open it. And now with a deep breathing, we would be chanting Om for one time. Raise your hands in the upward direction, rub them together. And after the energy is created between your palms, transfer it to the face. Slowly and slowly with the blinking of eyelids, open your eyes. Take the support of your right hand, turn towards the left side. And now you can sit. I think everyone is relaxed. Shall we move towards the practice of Pranayam also, in which we would be listening to the Bhajan from Pruja Sadhviji? But before that, let us first move towards the practice of Bhastrika Pranayam, which is deep breathing. And for the deep breathing, we just need to remember two laws and we have to breathe deeply. Inhale and exhale, keep your back, try to keep your back straight. Try to keep your neck also straight. Place both of your hands over the knees in the Dhyan Mudra once again. And inhale deeply, exhale completely. Take at least a duration of 2.5 seconds for inhalation, the next 2.5 second for exhalation. In this way, we would be completing one Bhastrika Pranayam in 5 seconds, which means practice of 10 to 12 Bhastrika Pranayam in 1 minute. So this is the practice of Bhastrika Pranayam and two laws, two rules which we have to remember is that try to inhale and exhale as much as air possible. So this is the first rule, try to inhale and exhale as much as air possible. And second rule says, try, after this trial, try to inhale and exhale from your lungs. This is an exercise of your lungs. So inhalation and exhalations would be happening inside the lungs, not inside the stomach. As there is a partition in the, in the chest region and in the gut region. And this is a wall, diaphragm. When we inhale deeply, this wall moves in the downward direction. And with, and then when we exhale, after exhalation, this moves in the upward direction. And this gives us a feeling that there is some movement happening inside our stomach, but this is not, this is not so. There is only the movement inside our lungs and because of that, our chest would also bulge out and they will also contract. So there was be, there would be an expansion and contraction inside the lungs and chest and no other body part will move. Also there would be no facial expression change. So just with the relaxation, keep your eyes closed. This is the practice of Bhastrika Pranayam. And as we all discussed in recent few days, that this is the pranayam with the help of which we can increase the capacity of our lungs. Normally when we are using only the 40-60% of our lungs we are utilizing. And when we practice Bhastrika Pranayam, we are able to utilize around 80 to 100% of our lungs, which is actually ultimately going to increase the amount of oxygen inside each and every cell of our body. And ultimately, we will be able to regenerate our body cells which have degenerated because of the diseases and lack of oxygen. So inhale deeply and exhale completely. Minimum 5 durash, 5 minutes of duration. It should be taken to practice the Bhastrika Pranayam. A practice of minimum duration of 5 minutes is must for everyone. And for those who are suffering from the chronic diseases, genetic diseases, we request them to please perform or practice this Bhastrika Pranayam for at least 10 to 15 minutes. And deep breathing is something that we are trying to breathe with the awakeness. And with that, if you are breathing for a whole day, then also it is fine. So ultimately, we are trying to increase the depth of our breathing with the help of Bhastrika Pranayam. And also, first and foremost, it increases the health of our lungs. And if our lungs are strong, our respiratory system would be strong. And if our respiratory system would be strong, then obviously, our immune system will also be strong. A stronger immune system will result into a body which is healthy, a mind which is healthy. So this was the practice of Bhastrika Pranayam. And after the practice of Bhastrika Pranayam, let us move towards the next practice, which is Kapal Bhati Pranayam. The only difference is that in Bhastrika, we were inhaling and exhaling forcefully. But in Kapal Bhati Pranayam, we have to exhale out forcefully. And we have to exhale out with the help of our stomach, with the help of our navel. So when we will, we will try to exhale out with the help of our stomach, there would be a very little contraction happening inside the muscles of our stomach. So stomach muscles will move this time. So there would be a contraction. And when we will inhale, the inhalation should be normal, that we are breathing normally each and every moment of our life. So that kind of inhalation, normal inhalation in Kapal Bhati Pranayam, but forcefully exhalation and for that forcefully exhalation, take the help of your stomach. Normally when we breathe, when we place our finger right beneath our nose, we can feel the breathing on our finger. But when we practice Kapal Bhati Pranayam, we can check that the practice is right or wrong by just placing our hand in front of our mouth. And when we exhale out forcefully, the air, the exhalation would be touching our hand. And if we are feel, if we are able to feel the air over our heads, then the practice is good, that is perfect. And if it is not so, then we need to, once again, listen to the instructions, that there would be a little contraction in the muscles of the stomach when we practice Kapal Bhati Pranayam. And this Kapal Bhati Pranayam, as we have learned it from Puja Swamiji and Natcha Sri Maharaj, is known as the king of all the pranayams because with the help of Kapal Bhati Pranayam, we are able to get benefits in more than 90% of the diseases. Asthma, BP, cholesterol, diabetes, arthritis, rheumatoid arthritis, osteopenia, osteoporosis, gout, any kind of bone related issue, Kapal Bhati Pranayam is beneficial. For those who are suffering from skin related issues, Kapal Bhati Pranayam is beneficial. Eczema, leukoderma, psoriasis, scrooderma. Also if we are having any issues in the digestion, indigestion, constipation, orgasmic related issues, Kapal Bhati Pranayam. Also when we practice Kapal Bhati Pranayam on the regular basis, which should be around 10 to 15 minutes for every person. Those who are suffering from normal problems or those who are healthy also, they should also try to practice Kapal Bhati Pranayam for at least 10 to 15 minutes of duration. And those who are suffering from these kinds of chronic diseases, we request them to practice it for a minimum of half an hour duration. And in this practice, we would be now listening to Puja Sadhviji also. And as soon as she gets ready, I would be expanding the description of this Kapal Bhati Pranayam. So I was saying, for those who are suffering from any indigestion, in that case also Kapal Bhati Pranayam is beneficial. Those who are facing any deficiency in the body like vitamin A, vitamin B12, vitamin C, iron, mineral, protein, any kind of deficiency because Kapal Bhati Pranayam improves our digestion system. That's why we, we get the benefits in the deficiency case also. Knee pain, back pain, neurological disorders, nervous system related disorders, also SMSLE autoimmune diseases, Kapal Bhati Pranayam is beneficial in all. And also those who are suffering from very coarse veins, Kapal Bhati Pranayam is beneficial in that case also. Those who are facing the hair fall or sinus related issues or thyroid, either it is hyperthyroid or hypothyroid, Kapal Bhati Pranayam is beneficial. And I think Puja Sadhviji is ready with the bhajan. I would request you all to please keep your eyes closed, keep practicing Kapal Bhati Pranayam. You will get more out of the bhajan and Kapal Bhati Pranayam together. It would also take us into a state of meditation also. So now let us feel the words and those who are not able to understand the wordings of the bhajan, kindly please keep practicing this Kapal Bhati Pranayam. And just do listen, you would be able to understand the emotions.
Yog kadhvaj lehreaya, yog kadhvaj lehreaya. Yog kadhvaj lehreaya, yog kadhvaj lehreaya. Yog ki shakti ne hai dekho, vishwa ko aaj jagaya. Yog ki shakti ne hai dekho, vishwa ko aaj jagaya. Hai mangal chhaya, aaj hai mangal chhaya. Hai mangal chhaya, aaj hai mangal chhaya ho. Yog kadhvaj lehreaya, yog kadhvaj lehreaya. Yog kadhvaj lehreaya, yog kadhvaj lehreaya. Yog hi to purusharth jagata, sachcha marg dikhata. Yog hi to purusharth jagata, sachcha marg dikhata. Nit navin utsah varhata, bal boothi ko varhata. Nit navin utsah dilata, bal boothi ko varhaya. Yog ka bhav jodish chhaya. Sab ke man ko bhaya, hai mangal chhaya. Aaj hai mangal chhaya ho. Yog kadhvaj lehreaya, yog kadhvaj lehreaya. Yog kadhvaj lehreaya, yog kadhvaj lehreaya. Nahi rashu visheshu senata, iska na kisi dharm senata. Nahi rashu visheshu senata, iska na kisi dharm senata. Jo bhi yog ko hai apnata, laa bhav nishit pata. Jo bhi yog ko hai apnata, laa bhav nishit pata. Hai mangal chhaya, aaj hai mangal chhaya. Hai mangal chhaya, aaj hai mangal chhaya ho. Yog kadhvaj lehreaya, yog kadhvaj lehreaya. Yog kadhvaj lehreaya, yog kadhvaj lehreaya. Rogon ko yah door bhagata, tan man swasth banata. Rogon ko yah door bhagata, tan man swasth banata. Saath hi aayo ko hai varhata, man ko sukhie banata. Saath hi aayo ko hai varhata, man ko sukhie banata. Hai mangal chhaya, aaj hai mangal chhaya. Hai mangal chhaya, aaj hai mangal chhaya ho. Yog kadhvaj lehreaya, yog kadhvaj lehreaya. Yog kadhvaj lehreaya, yog kadhvaj lehreaya. Yog ki shakti ne hai dekho, vishwa ko aaj jagaya. Yog ki shakti ne hai dekho, vishwa ko aaj jagaya. Hai mangal chhaya, aaj hai mangal chhaya ho. Yog kadhvaj lehreaya, yog kadhvaj lehreaya. Yog kadhvaj lehreaya, yog kadhvaj lehreaya. Yog kadhvaj lehreaya, yog kadhvaj lehreaya.
So we hope you enjoyed the bhajan and you would be ready to hear one more also, which we would be listening during the practice of Anulom Vilom Pranayam. Now let us start the practice of Anulom Vilom Pranayam. With the help of your right hand, the thumb of your right hand, close the right nostril, inhale with the left. Then with the help of rest of the fingers, close the left nostril and exhale with the right. Inhale with the right nostril once again and exhale with the left. Keep practicing this Anulom Vilom Pranayam. In which try at least, try to at least take two point five seconds to inhale with the left. The next two point five seconds minimum to exhale from the right. Then next two point five seconds for exhalation, inhalation from the right. And next two point five seconds for the exhalation from the left nostril. So this would be making one practice, which is approximately equal, is equivalent to a duration of ten seconds. And this means that we would be able to practice around ten, sorry, to practice around five to six times of Anulom Vilom Pranayam in one minute and around fifty to sixty Anulom Vilom Pranayam in the duration of ten minutes. So this is a very relaxing pranayam, which is responsible for taking maximum amount of oxygen into our brain also. And that's why it is beneficial in all the issues related to mind and brain. Also, this is beneficial for those who are dealing with the insomnia or lack of sleep in the night. Also, very beneficial for those who are suffering from migraine or other related, other kind of headache. Also, this is beneficial for those who are dealing with the stress, anxiety, depression. Just keep practicing this Anulom Vilom Pranayam with your eyes closed, keep practicing it. Inhalation and exhalation, a process of inhalation and exhalation. So this is a very beautiful pranayam, which is also very beneficial for the health of our heart. Those who are suffering from BP or those who are suffering from heart blockage, they should at least try to practice it for half an hour. And also, this is very beneficial in the cases of gastric-related issues also. So this is a very interesting pranayam in which, which can be performed even after one hour of having meal. Rest of the pranayam like Brahmari and Uddhgeet can also be performed after one hour of having meal. And also, the subtle exercises can be performed after one hour of having meal. But all the rest, the exercises, the practice of asanas, the Kapal Bhati Pranayam and also all the sun salutations etc., etc., they are needed to be performed after four to six hours of having meal. Because there is a limit of our stomach that it can hold food for up to six hours. So this depends, this four to six hours depends on what we have eaten. If we have eaten light food, then we can obviously would be able to digest it earlier. And those who are taking heavy food, it would take a little more time. And based on that, there should be a gap of four to six hours. Now we would be moving towards the next practice of pranayam, which is the Shidli Pranayam. And for that, we just need to fold our tongue and then with the folded tongue, inhale with your mouth and exhale with your nose. Once again, practice this Shidli Pranayam. Inhale with your mouth this time, you would be inhaling from the mouth, but tongue should be folded. And with the first practice only, we can feel the coldness, which increases inside our body. After we practice this Shidli Pranayam, once again, let us practice it. So it reduces the hotness inside our body, increases the coldness. And those who are suffering from issues related to the heating, they can like all to, at present also, because we are used to it, but people living in UK are not used to this hotness. And the practice of Shidli Pranayam benefits us in this case also. And now let us move towards, because we are running short of time and we have to move towards the Brahmari and Uddhgeet Pranayam. And for the practice of Brahmari and Uddhgeet Pranayam, after that, we would be having a presentation of the difficult asanas from Puja Sadhviji also with the music. And before that, Brahmari, Uddhgeet, Samahasana and Hasyasana would be completing the session. And for that now, please close your ears with your thumb. Place your forefinger over your eyebrows. Use rest of the three fingers to cover your eyes with the mouth closed and deep breathing. Just inhale deeply and keeping your mouth closed, chant the om with the mouth closed. Place both the hands over your knees and the practice of Uddhgeet Pranayam with deep breathing. Relax. Once again, raise your hands, rub them together, transfer the energy onto the face. With the blinking of eyes, just open your eyes slowly and slowly, so that this strong light doesn't affect the pupil of your eye. And now, towards the next practice, which is the Samahasana. And for the practice of Samahasana, let's, those who are capable, can manage to sit in the Vajrasana posture, sit in the Vajrasana posture, place your hands on the floor, take out your tongue and keep your focus between your eyebrows, the practice of Samahasana for three times. And now take the saliva inside your mouth in your throat and also massage it from the outside, so that if any dryness is created inside your throat, that can be removed. And before moving towards the Hasyasana, I would request you all to take one more, I'd rather I would say a resolution, because I have actually talked about this resolution at every place. But just wanted to remind you once again about the resolution. And the resolution was that, that obviously, we all know that we are going to grow in the age. We would grow older, but what we have to keep in our mind and we have to work with ourselves and we have to take a resolution that up to last breath, there should not come a situation that we would need support of others. Instead, we will, we will remain the support for others instead of seeking any kind of support from others. And for that, for that resolution, you have, many of, you have promised me and I hope you would be keeping a promise. And for that now, once again, let us repeat that resolution, that up to now, what has happened has already happened, but from now onward, we will not get, we will not get, from now onward, we will not get, we will not get, we will not get. So I hope I have repeated it for five to six times and those who are not able to join would also not get ill. And now let us open our arms and together with the open arms. So it's a prayer from God, that you always keep laughing and keep healthy and happy like this forever. And we would be doing clapping with two lines and I hope you are aware, the song we are going to, the bhajan we are going to sing together. Mere dada ke darbar me sab logon ka khata. Mere dada ke darbar me sab logon ka khata. Jo koi jaisi kar nahi karta, jo koi jaisi kar nahi karta, vaise hi bal pata. Mere dada ke darbar me sab logon ka khata. Mere dada ke darbar me sab logon ka khata. Kyaa saadhu, kyaa sant, grihasthi, kyaa raja, kyaa rani. Kyaa saadhu, kyaa sant, grihasthi, kyaa raja, kyaa rani. Prabhu ki pushtak me likhi hai sab ki karam kahani. Prabhu ki pushtak me likhi hai sab ki karam kahani. Antar yaami andar betha. Antar yaami andar betha, sabka hisab lakata. Mere dada ke darbar me sab logon ka khata. Mere dada ke darbar me sab logon ka khata. Uski tez nazar se bande koi nahi bach pata. Mere dada ke darbar me sab logon ka khata. Mere dada ke darbar me sab logon ka khata. Mere dada ke darbar me sab logon ka khata. Mere dada ke darbar me sab logon ka khata. Jo koi jaisi kar nahi karta, jo koi jaisi kar nahi karta, vaise hi bal pata. Mere dada ke darbar me sab logon ka khata. Mere dada ke darbar me sab logon ka khata. Mere dada ke darbar me sab logon ka khata. Mere dada ke darbar me sab logon ka khata. Mere dada ke darbar me sab logon ka khata. Bolenge sachdanand bhagwan ki. So now we are ready with the performance from Puja Sadhviji, the Kethen Asanas. And with that, we can keep performing any pranayam we would like. Take full advantage of the time you have.
Atma tada puti hai kast bhog bhog kar. Atma tada puti hai kast bhog bhog kar. Uth manusha yog kar, yog ka prayog kar. Yog ke prayog se sharir ko nirog kar. Uth manusha yog kar, yog ka prayog kar. Bal milega atma ko swasth hoga ye sharir. Tichna hogi buddhi aur man ki bhii mitegi. Bal milega atma ko swasth hoga ye sharir. Vishwa vya pi chet naam tu bisaha yog kar. Uth manusha yog kar, yog ka prayog kar. Yog ke prayog se sharir ko nirog kar. Uth manusha yog kar, yog ka prayog kar. Dharm jaati vesh bhusha desh kal se pare. Yog jo kare manusha mrti se bina daray. Dharm jaati vesh bhusha desh kal se pare. Yog jo kare manusha mrti se bina daray. Purva jau ka jhaan hai ye iska sadhupayog kar. Uth manusha yog kar, yog ka prayog kar. Yog ke prayog se sharir ko nirog kar. Uth manusha yog kar, yog ka prayog kar. Apni dur dhasha pe teri aankh me namie nahi. Mat bana bahan tujko vatt ki kamie nahi. Apni dur dhasha pe teri aankh me namie nahi. Mitra man karma ko alasya se biyog kar. Uth manusha yog kar, yog ka prayog kar. Yog ke prayog se sharir ko nirog kar. Uth manusha yog kar, yog ka prayog kar.
Thank you very much everybody and we are very proud today to see this amazing performances, dear brothers and sisters. To see this amazing performances, dear brothers and sisters, we can all do this ourselves. And we are very lucky, this doesn't cost a penny. And Pooja Swamiji and Acharya ji comes to your home every day, free of charge, correct? So I'm very proud today to announce and welcome our Consular Angela Candola from Nottingham City Council. She is the portfolio holder for highways, transport and planning. And she is the first Indian Consular over here. Let's put our hands together for her please. Acharya ji say, Ashiravat lenge. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. I would just like to say, it's a great honour to be invited here today. And I'm just overwhelmed for the invitation and Happy International Day of Yoga. A warm welcome to everybody and our visitors that have come out of Nottingham, come from outside of Nottingham to come and partake in the yoga today. Yoga is one of the best form of healthy exercise and that therapeutic sessions that you have. And it's amazing to see so many of you participating here today. And it's just honourable and I'd like to thank Badanjan League Yoga Breed Trust in association with Nottingham City Council to put this on. All the volunteers who have worked really hard to make this happen. I understand this is the largest international yoga day that's happened so far. And I'm sure that the organisations will make sure it's twice as large for next year. And on top of that, you got the most amazing, amazing weather for today. It just couldn't get any better. And I'd just like to say, enjoy yourselves today, have a great day. And once again, I'm honoured to be here today and be part of this International Day of Yoga. Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you very much Angela ji for coming today and you know auspicious day. We are very lucky to give, not one but two, but three blessings today from very special people who've come all the way from India for us. And dear brothers and sisters, before we break off, we have got one final very special performance today. And it's yoga by, taught by Madhurika Trivedi ji and performed by Siddharth and Sandeep. So let's give them a warm welcome please. Madhurika ji.
Om Namaste. I'm honoured to be here today. And I teach yoga to, for children on a weekly basis, every Sunday from 9:30 till 10:30. I've been doing it for the last four years. And I started because yoga has been a very special part of my life from a very young age. And I've seen the benefits and I want to allow and encourage children from a young age to see that benefit also through their mind, their body and their atma. So it can help them in every way and it's my pleasure to teach them every, every week. So I'm gonna perform a few asanas for you all today and I'd invite you to all enjoy in please. So we're starting with the Surya Namaskar. So if you can stand at the front of your mats. Keeping your feet together. And just as a warning, if you do have any back pain or suffer from high blood pressure or any heart conditions, please do not bend forward. And if you're suffering from any hernia, please do not bend back. Also, just go at your own pace. And if at any time you feel uncomfortable, please stop and take a break. Okay, so standing with your feet together, hands together. You're going to take your hands all the way up, breathing in. Breathing out, bringing your hands down by your feet, bending your head. Taking your right leg back. Looking up, breathing in. Then taking your left leg back. Feet together. Holding it there, bringing your knees, chin and chest to the floor. Bringing your body up, looking up, breathing in. And then coming up onto your feet. Bringing your left foot forward. Looking up, breathing in. Right leg forward, feet together, tucking your head in. Breathing out. Breathing in, coming all the way up, stretching your arms behind you. Up onto your feet, breathing out, try to touch your heel to the floor. Bringing your right leg forward, in between your hands if you can. Left leg forward, breathing out. Going to now move into Raghshasana. So this asana is gonna help you with your nervous system and keeping your balance. So connecting our body and our mind together. Bringing your right foot up, wherever it feels comfortable to keep your balance. That may be at the bottom by your ankle, by your knee or further up on your thigh. Slowly raise your arms, focusing on your balance, bringing your hands together. Focusing on your breathing. We're going to go into Trikranasana. So keeping your legs slightly apart, shoulder width apart. Raise your right arm and keep your left arm by your thigh. Breathing in, deep breath in. And as we bend to the left, you're going to bring your right arm over and hold it there. Going down as far as you can, towards the ground with your left leg. Okay, if we can sit onto the floor, onto your mats. Straining your legs in front of you. We're going to lie down onto the floor on your back. Bending your right leg into Bhavan Magdhasana. This is gonna help release any trapped wind, so it's beneficial for the stomach. Interlocking your fingers and taking them back around your knee. Breathing and breathe out, bringing your nose up towards your knee. Holding it there for a few seconds. And coming back down. And we're going to repeat that on the other side. So bringing your left knee up, interlocking your fingers over your knee. Breathing in, breathing out and coming back up. And slowly coming back down. Breathing in deeply and out. Turning over from your left hand side over onto your stomach. We're going to move into Pujangasana. So keeping your hands by your chest. Breathing in, you're going to lift your body up. Looking up towards the sky. This is gonna be beneficial for your back, your stomach. And slowly coming back down, breathing out. One more time, breathing in, raising your body up. And slowly coming back down. Okay, and slowly moving over onto your back again. We're going to go into Markadasana. So bending your knees, keeping them together. Stretching your arms by your side, making a T shape. You're going to breathe in and turn your legs, knees, keeping touch of each other. And turn your head to the opposite, so you're looking at your left hand. Keeping your ankles on top of each other and your knees on top of each other. This is very beneficial for your stomach and your back. Bringing them back into the centre. And repeating on the opposite side, turning to your knees to the left and looking to the right. And again, coming back to the centre, this time keeping your legs shoulder width apart. And turning your knees to the left, to the right, looking to the left. Focusing on your breathing and coming onto your left side, gently come back up. We're going to move onto Golmakasana. So if I can ask you all to sit in Vajrasana by turning your legs so that you're on your knees. If you do have any knee pain, please skip this one. And you can sit in Sukasana and do the same. So with your legs crossed. You're going to take your right leg and place your leg over your left. Making sure that both your knees are in line with one another. Raise your right arm, place that behind your back. Taking your left arm behind you. And you're going to try to hold the other hand. If you can't, you can take a piece of cloth and you can hold on to that. And eventually, when you're practising, you will be able to. This is very beneficial for your stomach, for enlargement of the intestines, for your liver and your kidneys. Whilst you're in this asana, take a deep breath in and breathe out. We'll then repeat on the other side. Switch to the other side, raise your left arm in the air and take that back behind you and your right arm below. Okay, bringing your right leg back. And you're going to the same with your left, so taking that forward and across. Your left, your right leg, keeping both your legs in line, so your knees are one above the other. Raise your right arm, place that behind your head. And take your, your right arm below, holding them together. Take a deep breath in and out. And switching over to the other side, taking your left arm below and your right arm above your head and behind. Bringing your legs back, sitting in Vajrasana. Take a deep breath in. And out. And breathing in. And out. Once again, take a deep breath in. And breathing out. Thank you very much for joining. Thank you very much, Om Namaste.